Thanks everybody for coming. Meeting is recorded. You got that on?
For me?
Yep. Long House Scenic Drive. Jim did send us a draft contract. Did you, or grant application? Should we both take a look at it?
I skimmed through it. I haven't really read it deeply. I've been trying to get a meeting with King County. We've emailed them, called them, called them, then emailed them, then emailed them, then called them again. And there is, I don't know. Well, we'll just have to keep trying. I'm not really sure why they're... I am sure that they're really busy with a lot of stuff. And if you have another county just starting to email you to get you, them involved in an agreement, that they don't have any understanding of.
Do we need them?
Yeah. Basically, Dan and I went to, Dan Glott's went to the TAC meeting. The Transit Advisory Committee, I think is the name of it. But we went there and talked to PennDOT as a part of the meeting. And basically came to the conclusion that in order for this project to go from start to finish, that it's going to have to be both on the northwest tip and the north central tip. Which is basically how PennDOT allocates resources.
Because of like a mine all stretches into the region? That's what I'm saying.
I know. So basically, we have to, I mean, it's gonna, it's just a matter of a formality, but we have to get them to at least sign the application essentially. And once that happens, then we should be able to just follow through with everything. But like I said, I've offered to drive out there, you know, do everything that we can, meet them whenever they're available. One of the commissioners, I think, is out on vacation for like a week and a half. And I think it might be the chair, so I don't know if that's holding the whole business up. But I'll just keep calling until they finally give us a time.
Okay. Thanks for driving out. I did skim them too, if you think they need to read it or even can. It had pretty pictures and graphs, I bet you might like it.
Yeah. Well, that's what I spent most of my time looking at.
All right. Anything else on Long House Scenic Drive?
Nope.
Forest County 911. Didn't we talk about that last week? Well, update. Apparently Forest County is a go. I did talk to Commissioner Snyder, oh, I would say mid-early last week. Wasn't too long after we talked about it last week. So they will be drafting up an agreement. The agreement will need to stipulate that any costs that are incurred in order to get them on our system, they will pay for completely. And I think we've got about $38,000 a year for, with a 2% increase for the dispatching. And then they're continuing to do the sheriffs for free. Well, although now you could argue that we're not doing it for free. It's kind of getting off the... So we'll be bringing that to the table, not this time, but probably the next week. Again, I don't see any drawbacks to it. Any questions on that? Okay. Attorney Tree did not turn in their right to know policy duty. Okay.
Well, I just wanted to, I wanted to, I've been talking with him about it a bit. One of the things is, I brought a bunch of information on this about a month ago. And I just wanted to try to push to get a decision on it. This is for Archive Social, which is a social network archiving solution for public entities. There have been several cases within just Pennsylvania alone in the past year of various right-to-know cases involving, you know, public officials' accounts, county accounts, and a lot of different things. Basically, asking for information and then the counties or the right-to-know officers not fulfilling the request just because they either thought that they were considered private or they were considered, or they didn't have the information. It had been deleted off of the system or a number of other things. And so this program will archive all of the content for all of the various entities, social media entities that have information on them related to the county, one way or the other. So right now, the lowest account, or the lowest billing setup that you can get is $199 a month. My suggestion is, is that we take a portion of the additional revenue that we've had from the bed tax increase and utilize that in order to pay for this.
Oh, have you heard?
Yeah. So we were, we were pulling in $100 or $200 a month previously. Now it's up to $700, $800, $900, something like that. You know, so there's room to move in it. And the funds technically don't have to be utilized. They can be utilized for whatever you want. They're considered an administrative fee. My suggestion would be, since we do promotion on these channels, that it seems like an appropriate allocation. My point in pushing to get it implemented is a couple of things. One is, I want to avoid, you know, a potential lawsuit or an issue with, you know, records management. That's one. The second thing is, is as a part of solicitors and our effort to update the right-to-know policy and the open records policies, they should be incorporated into that as the policy will change because it's implemented. Because this will give more options for the open records officer to pull records off of the system and then fulfill them. So if someone, for instance, wants to know why their comment was deleted off of our Facebook page, the open records officer can fulfill that, what the content was, and then state that, you know, it was inappropriate, or there was derogatory language, or something to that effect.
Yeah. And then we need a system to do that, definitely.
Exactly. Right now, if we had to do that, it would involve, you know, taking screen captures and everything else. And really, especially if you go back even more than a week, there's a possibility that you really have to dig in order to find the content. This system is totally searchable. It archives not only the content that you see, but also the code behind the content. So people can also make open records requests for the code as well. So it covers all those bases. It's pretty comprehensive, so.
All right. Well, you've identified a need and a source of income. From my perspective, we're ready to go.
I'd like to speak out just against tying that source of income to the need. Not that I'm against using that income for that. But we don't tie any of our sources of income to things that we do unless it's stipulated by law that we have to, you know, whatever ordinance it is that brings that revenue into us. This would be just like, you know, tax revenue going up or any other revenue going up. I have no problem at all with saying, you know, we've got extra money in our budget, so we're going to be able to cover it. But I don't want to, I don't think the county should specifically tie it to that. If a hotel tax revenue ever drops down for some reason, and you still want to need this, you don't want to say, "Dewey can't get it because we don't have it." Hotel tax revenue right now, our administrative fee goes into the general fund, just like others' revenue. So there's definitely money there in the general fund because of the increased revenue, but I just didn't want a word of it that it was really tied too bad.
All right. I'm aware that there's no way to legitimately tie the cost of it. It's just there, those funds have been added to the pool. And so I think that they could be below.
Okay. I understand, I agree.
Okay. Commissioner Morrison, do you have an opinion?
That's fine.
Okay. So you've already got a quote.
Oh, yeah. I'll work with the purchasing department in order to move forward on it.
And if no other alternative is there?
I've looked through other ones. This is really the main one that everybody uses. It's the most comprehensive solution. And for $200 a month, I felt like it was, you know, appropriate, especially with all of the accounts that we have.
Okay.
Is that for the counties, or do you? Do you know?
Yeah. I can't remember off the top of my head how many other counties in the state use it, but it's utilized pretty broadly, you know, by a lot of different organizations, so.
Okay. I've never heard of it before, so I don't think we've been any confidence or anything.
Well, I think that the whole archiving social media is a new, is such a new business niche that there aren't many people doing it or aware of it. And really, honestly, it's mostly the public sector that utilizes it just because of open records.
That's right.
So that's why I don't know that there are many solutions for it currently. It would be nice if, it'd be nice if the state put something together, but I wouldn't hold my breath. The other thing is...
That would be a couple of steps to...
Well, whatever, well, I mean, like a solution that would be offered to counties, you know, as a, as a way to compile the information.
Honestly, it'd be nice if Facebook did that, just for every age.
Yeah.
But...
Well, you'd all have contacts, why don't you get ahold of Zuckerberg and figure it out?
I'm told I might be allowed a meeting with him, I don't mind.
Oh, there you go. Well, you can, you can just push that across the table. Hey Mark, can you do something about archiving your information so that we don't have to pay somebody to do it?
Yeah. Sure, that would be his top concern.
Yep.
Anything else on, whatever you call it, social archives?
Nope.
Okay. RFI, can I speak to that?
Yeah. The, what I want to talk about was the, this company called Edovo. I was approached by one of their reps a few months ago. What they do, they lease tablets to correctional facilities. With these tablets, they can get several certifications. They get GED, CBL, ServSafe. I think it's going to help towards the recidivism. And also with all the certifications, the time they, or the time they put on trying to obtain these certifications, they also earn entertainment time. What the entertainment time is, say they put four hours towards their GED. They can earn whatever we decide. For every two minutes, we'll give you a minute of entertainment. There's movies, all movies, all entertainments edited for corrections. So I think it's a good, it's good for the recidivism. I think it's good, unfortunately, it's one of those things where you have kids. You have, put a tablet in front of them, put a movie in for them. That's kind of babysitting. So it's one of those things that's going to help correctional staff as well. So I'd like to look into getting it. It's $2.50 per unit, per day. This is an inmate benefit, therefore it could be paid for through the inmate commissary account. It's not going to be a cost to the county whatsoever.
Will it be an upfront cost to get Wi-Fi in the building?
There is a, there's an expense for the Wi-Fi. I was quoted Wi-Fi by IT Department, which, again, because this is going to be a benefit to the inmates, we would potentially use the inmate account to install the Wi-Fi.
Does the fiscal director agree?
She's got something to say.
Yep. I agree. No, I, I would just say Commissioner Reddell stood up how we don't directly tie funds to the Wi-Fi. Because that's what is stipulated for, for anything that enhances their...
Cam, go out and get your calendar and just bring it in, because I'd like to mark...
I think it's a huge, huge benefit to the inmate, as well as staff members. If you've got a guy sitting in a cell for four or five hours a day, that's four or five hours a day, he's not, you know, potentially causing disturbance. It's, we're not giving them to everybody. I think it's all going to fall into our incentive housing program. You have to earn the right to be in that housing unit where the tablets are available. It's not going to go to everybody.
So how many will you be getting?
A minimum order is 40. And I don't want to start off with any more than that. I just want to make sure the program works. He's going to be up next week to do a demonstration. IT wants to sit in on this to make sure everything's going to work with our system.
Excess a lot of units to put on a, on a Wi-Fi system.
Yeah, now I see why the Wi-Fi is so, I had no idea. I was thinking, what does a 40 plus other things will be?
Well, that's what I, I asked Bill last week. They're banned with. We are really be able to have both. We, doesn't seem to be a problem whatsoever. Because that's what I said, I don't want, with a new guarding system coming in, I don't want these tablets interfering with our security system.
Yeah. Well, Bill's tendency, and it's a good one in my opinion, is to overbuild things, so I'm sure.
Right.
He's engineered it.
And even because you have 40 tablets, doesn't mean you have 40 inmates using all the 40 tablets at the same time, too.
Can we, can we get a complete cost analysis on it? For, just to have an idea of like a benchmark for it, of what it's going to cost overall? I mean, I think that's a really good utilization of commissary funds. I mean, certainly, you know, especially...
So it's $2.50 a day?
$2.50. If we were to use all 40 tablets every day, you'd be about $2,600 a month.
Okay. So $30,000 a year?
Yeah.
Assuming you used every single one every day?
Yes.
Well, that's odd that, so, but that goes by usage?
Yes.
Well, it's leased, so you just return it at the breaks and all that other stuff?
Yeah, it comes in a 100% tamper-proof case, according to them. Anything happens to that unit, that's not our responsibility. But he, again, he's coming next week. If anybody'd like to sit in on a demonstration or see what the, what the programs are that they offer.
Yeah, could you let us know when you have that?
How much commissary money comes in a year?
I'd have to go look, but right now, we're almost at $200,000, I think.
Yeah, total though, and it's built up over time.
Yes, it's built up over time.
Just for the two, like, we put the phone, especially as of next month.
Yeah, it's changing.
We're guaranteed a minimum, just from the phone, of $5,000.
Oh.
Just from the phone, not even an inmate commissary.
Oh, okay.
What is the lease term on these? Do we have to sign up for such periods on it?
Yes. He's going to have all that information next week.
I was wondering, if we're paying a lot of commissary, you know, things change, and commissary didn't have money anymore, can we cancel the lease and not be on the general fund?
Is Shawshank Redemption blush?
Yeah, we can, we can customize.
Alcatraz probably want to block that one. What's the one with, is that the one with Clint Eastwood where he breaks out?
It's the one with, yeah. Do you tell us more about the other educational opportunities that provide inmates with books and that sort of thing? Other than this, that this would be complementing?
Well, the only, as far as educational, we do have the GED program to the state hospital. But as far as, we have some self-help groups. But we don't, we don't have the groups for the, I guess, the manpower to put these on, like I'd like to. I mean, this is, if we don't have the people coming in to put these programs on, this is the next best thing.
So do they generate the content themselves, or what is the content? I mean, I know they're going to be doing a presentation on it.
Yeah, they generate the content. Let's say of the certifications, we can say, "Okay, now we don't want this," or "We want these 10." We can put, the options are huge. I mean, there's, there's a ton of different certifications you can get. Edovo, EB, OPO.
I mean, it sounds really interesting. And much better utilization of their time.
Right.
You know, they're, they spend a lot of their time fighting over the television sets. So if they don't, the ones that don't have to fight over the TV anymore, I mean, that'll be...
So this is specific inmates?
I like how they refer to it as the prison experience. It's like, this is like part of the... It's not peak and peak, it's... I like the peaceful music.
So are there any competitors, John?
I didn't find any. I researched after he, after he left my office, I mean, I didn't see anybody else that's offering these.
Okay. Well, I think it's a great idea. I'm always eager to hear about opportunities that we can provide the inmates to better themselves.
I like the fact that it's leased, because if you lease it for a year and it doesn't pay the bills, I mean, if you try to look for links of the reading books on tape and that, and people reading the internet.
It's, yeah, it's definitely worth, worth it to try for a year, actually.
They, they started, January 1st of this year, they started instant messaging. And that's a 100% profit to the county. But I just don't know if, maybe, once we get everything else in place, maybe we can start... I think family members can buy more or less phone time.
And then they message through the tablets?
And everything is, we can read everything before we send it.
So does it look up keywords like file and cake?
Bio-metrics and health system.
Yeah.
But I mean, that's, that's something he told me about smarter when I talked to him. And I said, "Well, we're going to give everything else a try first, and then we'll look at that." I mean, security for me is my biggest concern. But I see so many advantages with the different certifications that they can get, and also reward with, with entertainment afterwards, so. And as far as the incentive housing, it's just giving them more of a reason to behave. That's where I want to be, that's what I want to do, so we're not going to give it to everybody. Honestly, it's, let me move there.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Anything else on that? Any questions from anybody? It sounds like, based from our perspective, we should move forward with getting the Wi-Fi and... Is that true?
Sure.
Okay, good. I think that's all of our new items for discussion. Orderly objectives, we've got them up there. Anyone have updates on their projects that they wanted to provide us?
I would like to move pictometry to next Monday's work session.
Oh, next Monday's work session, and then try to run these in with the phone?
Yes.
Awesome. Great. Cool. Anything else?
I have nothing for today.
Okay. Oh, on your freight summit bill. I can't get you a meeting with the Department of Commerce next week.
Mm-hmm. Okay, great.
Cam, how are we done with setting up the meeting for records? I just sent out who was on the, okay, good, committee, so.
When's your next Department of Commerce meeting?
Um, I think it's the 25th. It's, it's later in the month this month.
I had a Department of Commerce Commission meeting the other day. Oh, sorry, moving on to, unless anyone has had some projects. Okay, so moving on to dates, I had a Department of Commerce Commission meeting on Friday. And I really wasn't that much to report back. Conversation largely had to do with use of Act $13 and a lawsuit that we'll probably hear about in the CCAP that's trying to claim that those funds have to go, essentially, they have to give back money in order to pay for natural resource conservation kind of things. It's pretty weird. I didn't follow at all. And I'm very hopeful that CCAP weighs into it, because I don't see how we could possibly pay back any Act $13. The rest of it was just a strategic planning session for the organization. They have a workforce development board meeting on Friday that's coming up. There's nothing particularly interesting on the agenda. The limited hours, you probably saw on the paper, our Career Link has gone into effect. And they are actively doing mobile Career Link in Warren County. Which means that if they're not already, then they're going to be setting up shop like one day a month or something at every library in the county and that sort of thing, as they work out every month. I shouldn't say libraries specifically, in every little town. So EDU, etc., etc., should be having regular hours in their town.
Was it at the Career Links that they were doing the unemployment hearings? Have you heard anything about that?
We have one this Thursday.
Over there?
Yes.
Okay. There's been some talk of that, that if that's shutting down or whatever, there are people that actually believe that they're no longer having them there, that they're going to have to drive to Erie or something like that. I've had a couple of people ask about that.
I believe that's true. I have a meeting set up on Friday morning with Carmine from Career Link, the regional director in this area, the regional mobile Career Link. So I will learn more, and I can bring this to you.
Really aren't supposed to be any services that our system provides. It may change something in the state system, because the state is co-located with our workforce development system.
Yeah, well, they're...
Well, they're renting that space, they're leasing that space, and I don't believe they'll be leasing that space any longer.
Right. They're behind on the rent anyway.
Yeah, and I think that, I think there is a real concern about businesses having to go to Erie in order to do the...
Yeah, that should not, no, the workforce development system is going mobile, or it should coming to the businesses. So they don't have to go to Erie. Now they don't have to go down to An Ave.
Well, yeah, I think, well, I guess my thing is, is that it'd probably be good to get some more information on that and circulate it to them, just because I've had people ask about it. Like, what are we going to do with the...
And they are still having An Ave, so...
Yeah.
You're welcome to sit in on the meeting with me.
Well, I may.
I'm not, I'm not that involved.
We have not...
I just, yeah, I just know that I've had people ask me about it. Oh, this sounded concerning, so.
How long have they had Erie for? Many years.
Well, it's had a lot of iterations, at least, since early '90s, maybe, possibly before. And I can't tell you all the names, but, you know, the first startup now was, we had before that, and it was, gee, something before that.
I just mean the regular unemployment hearings. How long do they have those before, and I didn't know they did?
Yeah, it's at least, at least.
Oh, okay. Well, I used to have an Alameda hearing, so I didn't know that.
Oh, that's it. Yeah, they were also talking about going to Meville for it. That was the other thing.
Just walk in over there, they held a stand in my, Cindy and I went. They were closed, locked, right? They didn't lock the doors, anything?
One of the things that we had talked about was they're, moving from having that one physical space that's costing them a lot of money, to instead integrating into existing operations. So for instance, they're going to have regular hours at Warren Library, I believe. Another static location that they're going to have is in our human services department. So if you need a key place for hearings and such, we can offer that space up there. The idea is to get away, well, it's not our idea, it's WEOLA that is forcing us by law to decrease our brick-and-mortar presence. And the only way that we can do that, and still offer services at a local level, is to go mobile and integrate with existing institutions. And then Salvation Army, we're not going to be, they're not going to be using the van anymore, I believe. Instead, they're going to be using the Ford Ranger. Ford Ranger, that we had said the coroner could use, did have a thing up there to be effective. So one idea that we would call it, or I have, or came out of conversation, was one thing we could consider is selling the, or either using the maintenance van for like a backup coroner vehicle. I think all that would require would be putting some actual latches and stuff down on the, on the bed, so that you can slip a structure in. And the frequency that they have to use one of our vehicles would be a supporter or something, so it's not going to be that often. But then the county could provide the coroner's office with access to the vehicle. You know, they must, I know that we talked about it last year, but I haven't talked to you lately. What do we want to do about the commissioners, mainly vans, most of these letting maintenance? We've talked about getting rid of that, just downsizing our fleet, doing a better job of like scheduling to use other vehicles when we need it. I think that fits in the conversation, because really, maintenance is the primary user of it. And if, or if you're willing, I'd rather just have the two days or whatever that they need it for the elections, that you hear van.
I don't have a problem with getting rid of that vehicle. And if we're going to do it, I would do it now while there's still some value in it.
Exactly. We had actually top budgeted for repairs, so recall, some of the areas were over in our budget, because we said we were going to sell it, and then we did. in our budget because we said we were going to sell it and then we didn't, because we were using it more in the spring. And as a consequence, there's maintenance costs that are going under our budget that is zeroed out. Yeah, let's go ahead and...
Something I didn't mean to bring up, but I just wanted to talk about briefly, and I thought about it since I was sitting here actually, was, um...
That's dangerous.
Yeah, was that, and I had talked to you about it, was that the VA has a couple of, they're the, the drivers for the VA, DAV, sorry, utilize the, utilize space over at like Bridges Rehab, or Bridges Adult Day Center. And they have like a desk and a couple of phones, I believe, and they want to, Rouse wants to reutilize that space in order to move Kim Tompkins in there, she's taking over their care cottage bit and everything. Anyway, they want to use that space and we need to find a space for those two, I think it's two gentlemen, and they're only in there periodically when they're doing driving, but we need to find a space for them to move those desks, and they have to, I believe they have to have a phone line with that answering machine, I think.
I know, right now they have an answering machine.
And my thing is, is couldn't we technically, you know, get them just the, I mean, I guess we could just get them a phone in here or whatever, but I, I was trying to think, is there any space in this building or any space that anybody can think of where they could be housed? I haven't gotten, had a chance to go out to the location in North Warren to talk to them.
Uh, since the, you think services building?
Okay.
Could be potentially interesting. Their usage is only a lot of day.
Last, last we were told they're in there to answer the phones between eight and...
So four hours a day every fourth day? And there's two people? Or just one?
I think there's just, there's two people, but I think they just use one desk, and I don't, because...
I can try to get down tomorrow and, uh, make conversation.
Yeah.
Because they're, they're already gone now, so.
Okay, great. And we'll be around all day tomorrow, so anything that you could dig up, that would be really helpful.
Okay. Anything else on updates from commissioners on projects or schedules?
Regarding the schedule, I think most people probably already know we rescheduled our commissioners' meeting for Wednesday to Thursday.
Okay, then, I will not be here.
Okay.
I'll be on my way to Harrisburg.
And unfortunately for me, I will not be here either because there's an event that was scheduled for that day, and the commissioners didn't want to move to the meeting, so we, they've continued to pull the meeting on Thursday at noon, and that is the time of my event, so I won't be able to phone in this either, so I will not be here.
I don't believe there's anything controversial, I mean, it's all going to be...
Couple of proclamations.
Is there anything you didn't want us to vote on?
I want to ask about that. If, in our absence, is there a way to vote by proxy or?
I'm not sure that there is, but if there's something controversial, I mean, I wouldn't mind...
I don't see anything controversial on the agenda, as long as this agenda stays the agenda for one, for Thursday.
I know where it is. Oh, will you be back for this women's care hearing?
No.
I still don't know what that's about. Are you, can you, I don't know, Women's Care, Erie contacted me and asked to meet with the commissioner, but I don't really know what it's about, except that they were trying to do something in Warren County. Any, oh, don't forget that Rouse up till the test is this weekend.
Okay.
Okay. Any comments from the public slash app? Okay.
On, on this issue with the DAV, the only thing I can see as a possible problem is the location of the vehicles.
All right.
Because I'm not sure right now where they store those vehicles. And then they have a spot where they pick up their clipboard and the people they're supposed to pick up that morning, because they normally leave at around five or six o'clock in the morning.
If you could dig that up, that would be great, yeah.
I'll try to have something for you before I leave for Harrisburg, but I'll have it to you next week.
That's okay.
So you're saying they need to move their vehicles as well?
I don't even know if they have the vehicles down there. As far as I know, the vehicles are up at, in North Warren, they just use that space to answer phone calls and make appointments, like...
Right.
Yeah, I mean, most, so, I, there's not much parking space over there, so I can't, but I, I'm trying to think, because I want to say I've seen one of them there, but who knows, I mean, they might have been parked there temporarily, who knows?
Well, I was contacted early last year about this, and I worked with Mike Trojanowski from Career Link to find space in that building that they were leasing for the DAV, and now we've got mobile, they no longer have that space, so I imagine this is why this issue's coming up again.
There isn't room for them at the Farm Colony where they're adding up?
It might be now that they've expanded.
But the reason why it works so well at Career Link is because they continue to keep their vehicles where they were.
It's, it's a question of picking up the vehicle, picking up the clipboard, the clipboard has, sometimes has BII on it, so you, you got to be careful that you're not setting them up for a violation.
Okay.
Well, I'll see where I find out.
That would be great, thank you.
Yeah, anything else we could add to your... All right, thank you.
Keith, I need to get with you sometime, so we can talk about...
Yes, I have your email. I'll read it before you got back, so...
Because I do have an application to the sick bank, and...
You did, because they hated me, I went, "Hey, she said go ahead, you were gone."